Welcome to this evening's city council meeting. If everybody would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for tonight's invocation by Reverend Flynnoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God, we bow our heads with humble hearts and lifted spirits thanking you for your son, Jesus Christ, but we're asking your blessings right now over our city council meeting. We ask that every decision, every plan will be pleasing in your sight. Asking your blessings over our mayor and the city council and all their assistants. Asking a blessing over our fire department, our police department, our first responders. Remember our military. Lord, teach us to love one another as you have loved us. We ask all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
We have a little bit of enjoyment at the first up. Mr. Jenkins, where's he hiding? There he is. VFW has got a, I think these are annual presentations you're doing now? So I'll turn the mic over to you.
Okay. Well, with me is our post commander Norman Dyserd, and we have Mike Kraus, who's also a member with us here today. And I understand our firefighter that we're presenting the award to, his grandfather is also a VFW member. So, you know, it's kind of neat to have him. And I know there's several veterans in our midst as well. But each year, we have the honor of being able to recognize law enforcement officers, firefighters, even EMT sometimes whenever we get the nominations. But we don't always get people submitting nominations. Now, in our police, the chief and our fire chief submitted the nominations of the individuals that's receiving the awards tonight. But you know what? If any one of you know of a firefighter, law enforcement, EMT that you know is doing an outstanding job, send me a nomination because you can nominate them as well. It doesn't have to be the police chief and a police officer. Sometimes you know more about some of them than a lot of other people do. So that's, it's very honored to do that. And first, we're going to have our young man. Yeah. Our young man that's our firefighter of the year, Norman, we'll let you take this. Eli Pasada, if you'd come on up. And the write-up was that he wasn't really in any, you know, real, I'm going to let you go on the next side here. And if the police chief, fire, fire, Steve, Tim, if you could come on up here, too. Get them all into the, yeah, that's, that's good. But anyway, the write-up, you know, it wasn't that he was involved in any life-saving real deal, but the thing is, he was concerning his dedication to duty and his performance above and beyond the call of duty. And because of, and 21 years of age getting a recognition like that, isn't that something? I mean, and so it's our honor to recognize you as our firefighter of the year award for the VFW. Congratulations.
You're an honor. The man here is post 6401 VFW, giving you this certificate for naming you as firefighter of the year. Congratulations.
Well, let's turn this this way. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
And our law enforcement officer of the year is Kendra Anthony. If you would come on up. And you know, when, when the police chief, before he submitted the nomination, he says, can I submit our animal control officer for officer of the year? And I said, well, she's a police officer, isn't she? What's that? Not quite. But you're functioning almost as one, but you're in the law enforcement, you know? So whether you're an official, what you'd call a police officer, but you are in the enforcement of law. And, and we appreciate what she does. She, I understand she does a lot of hours and she puts in extra time at different concerts and so forth. And she does a tremendous job. And we see her always tooling around, around Bonner. And so it's our honor to acknowledge you as a law enforcement officer of the year.
Thank you so much.
That commander for 6401 VFW here gives our honor to give you this certificate naming you law enforcement officer of the year.
Thank you so much.
Okay. You know, too, too often, these individuals go unrecognized. We, we don't, you know, it's positive when we can give positive recognition to those who too many times received the negative publicity, shall we say. And to be able to acknowledge them for what they do that's good is a tremendous honor on our part. So, mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Appreciate it.
Time to move forward with the rest, next part of the agenda, citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This would be an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak to the mayor and city council on the record in an open public meeting about things that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody that would wish to speak to the council? Seeing none, we will move on with new business. First up is a public hearing to issue industrial revenue bonds for Skanel Properties LLC, building three. I would accept to make a motion to open the public meeting at 7:39.
So move.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon, second by Ms. Gurley. Vote, please.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, we'll ask for a presentation by.
Real quick, can we do this item and then the second, and then go back and do the consent agenda?
Good evening.
Do you want to do this public hearing and the resolution and then go back and do the consent agenda? And then?
They're watching. I did skip one item.
You're in an open, you're in a public.
Okay. Okay, so Stafford likes to go ahead and, you want to go ahead and staff break your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Megan Gilliland, your economic development coordinator. Tonight we are bringing to you a motion to adopt a resolution to, of intent to industrial, to issue industrial revenue bonds and property tax abatement for Skanel Buildings, Building Three, as it's probably been more commonly known. This property has had an, sorry, an IRB for a little while, but due to market conditions and some other changes affecting the development, the developer has requested that we restructure the IRB. Tyler Ellsworth with our bond council is here tonight to answer any specific questions. But I, and Cam Duff with Skanel Properties is also in the room for specific questions. But I would like to note that as part of this restructuring, the city will see the dedication and acceptance of the Riverview construction project no later than April 30th.
Is there anybody from the public wish to speak on this item at all? Name and address.
Good evening. I'm Greg Kendall, president of the Windout Economic Development Council. I do live here in Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas, but our office is in downtown Kansas City, Kansas. Do you need this specific address, mayor? Do you need this specific address?
No, you're fine.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, commissioner mayors, council members and mayor. I want to thank you for this opportunity to kind of just give you a couple of comments. As Megan noted, the market has evolved, and so the need to adjust the size of the buildings is also, needs to be adjusted, I think in a good way. Instead of just a couple of very large buildings, I think what you'll see is perhaps more consistent with what we saw prior to the pandemic. We are working in partnership with your team here at the city, Skanel Properties, Kansas Commerce, and a number of other private sector partners along with Kansas City Area Development Council to bring you high-quality jobs in companies. I think we're close on one, if not a couple of different projects that are looking at this location. And I think those will be companies that you'll like. I think they're companies that will be engaged in the community as well. We appreciate how Skanel Properties has marketed this site and has taken feedback from the city's team. Likewise, I think it's important to always note how pro-business your team is here at the city while also paying very close attention to your desires and the ordinance and codes that you all laid out. You all have the cost-benefit analysis that Q-TAC Rock has put together that I think kind of highlights the overall revenues from these projects. But I think I would just highlight one in particular, 3A, I think is going to generate at least about 130,000 a year in property taxes in the first year alone. But primarily, I just wanted to come before you all, on, on all of the public hearings that you have this evening, I'll just say one time that we really appreciate the work that you all have done and the environment and the atmosphere. It isn't that way everywhere as you might imagine. And so I think it's really important for you to know how well your city team works with the development teams from the outside and the various entities. So I just wanted to say that, ask that you would consider these items before you and that you would support the resolutions. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tyler Ellsworth with Q-TAC Rock, the city's bond council. As Mr. Kendall mentioned, part of the purpose of the public hearings that you have on the agenda tonight are to look at cost-benefit analyses that have been prepared in connection with each one of these sets of IRB proceedings. And so, as Ms. Gilliland said, this public hearing and the resolution of intent that follows this on your agenda is really to restructure what we call the Building Three area in the Compass 70 Logistics Park. It's the southeast, 53 acres. And without getting into the details of the cost-benefit analysis, which was in your agenda packet this evening, I think it's worth noting that the benefits substantially outweigh the costs based on the projections of the development of this 53 acres. And I don't know that, I need to hit it any more detailed than that, but for each of the jurisdictions that the cost-benefit analysis looked at, the state of Kansas, the city, the county, the school district, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, in each one of those jurisdictions, it's projected that the economic benefits of redoing these incentives outweigh the financial impact to those taxing jurisdictions. So happy to answer any questions, but wanted to point that out for the record.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? If not, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing at 7:46.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Wood. Well, vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood? Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, before we go on to item number two, we have to correct the mayor's mistake. And we're going to go back and we need to approve the agenda, approve the agenda and the consent agenda, which would includes the minutes of the February 12, 2024 city council meeting and claims for city operations. Does anybody from the staff need to pull anything? Anybody from citizens wish to pull anything? Counsel, do you wish to pull anything? If not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Blanks and a second by Ms. Wood. Roll, please.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Should have had one more item on there, which is forget about what just happened. Anyway, onto item number two, the resolution of intent to issue the industrial, industrial revenue bonds for Skanel Properties LLC, Building Three. I don't, do staff wish to add anything else? Otherwise, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and property tax abatement for Skanel Properties LLC, Building Three.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Mr. Shannon. And we'll start with, we'll let you begin.
No questions.
No questions. Thank you, guys, for your work.
No questions.
It was a tremendous amount of work, I know, for all those numbers. Thank you.
Nothing further?
Nothing.
Well, you can't get off that easy. Just let me ask you real quickly. I noticed there's Building Three then 3A. Is Building Three four encompass the whole site? And 3A will then encompass a specific project?
That's exactly right, mayor. Building Three is, in 2022, when we put the original proceedings in place, Building Three was contemplated to be a single larger building. What we're doing tonight is breaking that up into three smaller buildings. 3A is one of those.
Got you. And then I just want to comment that I've always been a believer in that I think incentives are great as long as it's, my first rule is do no harm to the general public. And in this instance, I don't believe there's any harm to the public. It's not like we're going to be putting any additional weightlifting on them, any burden on them for this project. So unless anybody else has anything else to say, vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, time to downsize a little bit now and open a public hearing to issue industrial revenue bonds for Skanel Properties LLC, Building 3A. So I would accept a motion, open the public meeting at 7:50 PM.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Ms. Long. All those, I'll go ahead and call for a voice vote.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And with that, then, does staff wish, need to add anything else in regards to this particular item?
I think maybe the only thing to add, as Tyler mentioned, this is a specific building within the parcel and a tenant has been identified.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliland. Is there anybody else wishes to speak?
Mayor, I'll just note that like the Building Three project, the Building 3A project is accompanied in your agenda packet with another cost-benefit analysis specific to this project and this intended build-to-suit-user. Just like the cost-benefit analysis for the Building Three area, which is larger, the cost-benefit analysis for this particular building and this sort of subset of the overall project is also very positive. And for each of the taxing jurisdictions, again, the projected financial benefits outweigh the projected financial cost.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Come forward.
Hi, Cameron Duff with Skanel Properties here on behalf of the applicant. And just, I'm here to answer questions, but I did want to address and just thank you, thank everybody for their support for our project up until this point. We've had some delays with the economy and we've been working hard to, we're, we're very excited about this project and Building 3A. And hopefully, we'll have a lot more information and details to announce on it very soon. And we're excited to get the Riverview Avenue improvements completed as I know everybody is. So thank you again for your support. Happy to answer any questions about the project and looking forward to continuing this, this industrial park.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishes to speak at all on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing at 7:52.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Blanks. Roll, vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number four, a resolution of intent to issue the industrial revenue bonds for Skanel Properties LLC, Building 3A. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and property tax abatement for Skanel Properties LLC, Building 3A.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Long. We'll start down, Mr. Shannon, with you this time. Any questions?
Nothing. Nothing.
I would just like to say that I, I kind of like the three buildings idea rather than the huge thing. And I like the fact that you've offered to always answer questions.
What else? Anything else?
No.
Mr. McMahon?
At it this time.
I agree with Ms. Wood.
No question.
I have nothing else additional to add, so we're just looking forward to hopefully having a structure going up here sometime in the near future. So with that, vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, back to another resolution, item number five, resolution to set a public hearing for Star Bond District at 118th Street and State Avenue. Staff?
How many, how many staff members can say they get the whole agenda?
My apologies, Megan.
Good evening again. This is a resolution to establish, or request to establish a Star Bond project comprised of property within the city of Bonner Springs, generally located 118th and State Avenue. The first step in this process is that you must adopt a resolution that the city is considering to establish the Star Bond Project District and include a public hearing to be held at a later date for more information on the, on the project district. This public hearing that you'll hold will establish the boundaries of Star Bond District. That's the first thing that we need to do through this process. And that public hearing would be set for April 8, 2024, here in these council chambers. Tyler with Q-TAC and Rock is also still here to present if you have any specifics or questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliland. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to set a public hearing for April 8 at 7:30 PM to establish a Star Bond Project District.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. We'll go ahead and start here with you, Mr. McMahon?
I have nothing.
Blanks?
No questions, but I do want to thank Megan for driving me up there. I think that was last week or the week before, to show me this project and the Skanel property. So looks really good up there, so I'm excited to see more progress on it.
You guys are making my job really easy tonight, aren't you? If nobody else has got anything else to add, we will go ahead and I'll call for a vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our last item on the regular agenda is the funding agreement for the Star Bond District at 118th Street and State Avenue. Staff, do we need anything else added?
This is just a funding agreement that is included in your packet. This is effectively just to pay legal fees associated with establishment of this district. Tyler's here to answer any questions related to this item.
Anybody else from the audience wish to speak? Seeing nobody, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement with EMAP KC LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kip and a second by Ms. Long. We'll go ahead and start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
No questions. And we're voting, sorry.
Nope, not yet. Not yet. We'll be voting secondly, so. Ms. Long?
No question.
Anything?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Can't somebody say something? I guess at this point in time, we are kind of, hopefully we'll see something happen with this project and we can come to some agreements. But I think it's important for the public to understand that we're setting a public hearing that no decision has actually been made at this point in time in regards to Star Bonds. It's strictly a public hearing to set the boundaries for the Star Bonds. I think the public needs to be aware of that. And with that, then, if there's no more questions or concerns, I will go ahead and call for a vote.
Gurley?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Unless there's something else I've missed, onto the city manager's report.
I just want to start by thanking all the restaurants that participated in Restaurant Week last week. There was a lot of time and effort that went into that, organizing it as well as putting graphics together and advertising. Again, the specials going on every day across restaurants in, in Bonner Springs. So a great event. This is, I believe, the second year in a row, so it's becoming an annual tradition now. So we're already looking forward to the, the third year. I do also want to note, did welcome three new fire captains today, so we continue the efforts to bring on new individuals into the department. And this will actually kind of come to, I think, a head next, our next council meeting where we'll have several individuals from the fire department present to actually get sworn in. So the community and you all know who they are. And then lastly, I do want to, I mentioned this at the last council meeting, but want to reiterate that certain members of the community are receiving lead line inventory notices in the mail. So the first round of mailings went out earlier last week. This is an EPA mandated documentation of lead line, service lines that go into your house or plumbing within your home. So again, we, we did kind of go through and isolate households based off of construction timeframe. And then those are the individuals that are receiving those notices. I was happy to hear, as of this morning, there was actually 100 Uh, I was happy to hear, uh, as of this morning, there was actually a hundred and fifty people that had already responded, uh, with pictures, um, for that. So this is, uh, again, a pretty robust process that every public utility or private utility has to go through. And, um, again, this is, uh, um, something we need to complete by, I believe, yeah, October sixteenth. So, uh, everybody's participation that is receiving those notices is, is thanked. There will be some additional notices, um, so to avoid getting those continuously in the mail, uh, you can, uh, go ahead and fill out the, uh, the information, or if there is any specific questions, uh, please feel free to contact, uh, the Public Works Office with the number listed in the, the letter. Uh, there's also some information available online as well. So, with that, that concludes my report.
Onto city council items, we'll start down with Mr. Shannon.
Sean, uh, with the, and I forgot to ask the gentleman that was here from Skanel, but, um, part of, on Exhibit C, number two, that, uh, the community benefits were seventeen thousand five hundred for ten years. Is that correct? So, and then they have their choices to where they want to.
Yeah, the, the agreement kind of goes into some particulars in there, but yeah, they're, uh, as part of the, uh, incentive package that's offered, there's a certain amount of abatement that's tied back to, uh, community, community benefits. So, yeah, the numbers that you, uh, reference, I believe, are accurate. Um, and I think that'll take some time as, as these come along, that more information will be available about how that's getting dispersed.
I thought, I thought that was great. Um, also, uh, have the public improvements on Riverview been completed? I know he addressed that, but I had.
Yeah, by, by and large, there's, um, there actually needs to be an acceptance by the council because it is a public improvement, so it's not necessarily officially done yet, but I think by, um, because of some of the, the wonderful weather we've been experiencing over the last couple of weeks, they have been able to make some great progress out there. But again, it isn't an open road yet because the council has not officially accepted that it's a public improvement.
Okay, um, number three, uh, thanks for, you're sending out that, uh, email to all of us because I, I realize that if your house was built after nineteen eighty-eight, you wouldn't be getting that, but you could be getting phone calls, and that was, that was great. Um, are we still receiving, uh, money from the Hollywood Casino each year?
We, um, yes, we receive a portion, sorry, I had to think about your question. Um, yes, we have a, a funding agreement or a sharing agreement with the Unified Government and then Edwardsville, so we do collect a portion of, um, the sales there annually, yep.
Right, but I thought on the, regarding the, uh, the hotel that they were supposed to build, and then they said if we don't build it, that we will?
That is, um, that is part of the agreement. Uh, there is a portion in the agreement that, that speaks to that. Um, there, there's probably a couple of nuances too that I know are being talked about, uh, at least it's the county commission level, uh, with some of our, um, representatives from this area. But there is a, there is a penalty that needs to be paid, I can't remember exactly what the amount is, um, that's actually being paid back to the Unified Government for not building that convention center annually, yep.
Okay, thank you, so. I think it's a million a year, and they don't, do we share in that, or is that we just share in revenue?
We, um, we, right now, we're only collecting the amount of revenue.
Okay, okay.
Before you go on, I was just going to mention, it's a percentage of their revenue, is the penalty. And it's been averaging, I think, between one point one and one point four million, but it varies each year because it's, it's.
It's not fixed.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a set percentage of that revenue, casino revenue.
Had a chance to, um, attend the Chamber of Commerce event on Friday night, and thanks to Emily and the board and a bunch of other people, I have no idea who put that on, but it was a tremendous event. Glad to see so many people come out and support, thanks.
Yeah, we had a good time Friday night. Um, a couple of quick things, I have seen a couple of people on social media asking why the library and the elementary school were not included in the new wayfinding signs.
I believe they're in, I don't, I don't know if there's any that actually direct to the library. Um, there are some that go to the school, Amber might know, but I know we do have a couple that we are looking to install at different areas, further up on Nettleton, I think was one area in particular. Um, it's just been a, an issue of supply and, and getting those things ordered, but we do have plans of installing additional ones that those, those two locations could certainly, um, stand out to be included. And you said the library and?
Elementary school.
Elementary, yeah.
I wasn't sure if it was a safety with small children issue, especially specifically for the elementary school, not wanting to point the general public to a large gathering of small children.
I think it had more to do with just where the ones that were placed are somewhat functional to point out those particular areas, if that makes sense. Um, like I said, I believe there was one that we were looking at in Nettleton, and, um, there's probably, like I said, a few other locations that we could look at, but, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Um, had an opportunity along with the mayor and city manager to tour the new water treatment plant. It, wow. It's mind-boggling what goes into creating drinkable water, and that plant is really something to see and be proud of. And I'm now more excited than ever to have it come online, that team is doing an amazing job, so. Thank them for putting up with us wandering around and asking questions. I think that's all for me, thank you.
Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, he did really brought everybody together to support it.
McMahon?
You know that, Emily. I was, uh, my wife and I were talking about, you know, our, our experience there, and the place was full. The food was good, your speakers were excellent, and your energy was off the charts.
Thank you.
And I think that's what drives that kind of stuff, so thank you for what you do in our community, means a lot.
I appreciate it a lot. Yes, um, thank you to, um, city council and, uh, city Bonner admin for showing up and I think filling almost three tables, uh, which I was told by a few board members was a really big deal. Um, and they hadn't seen those kind of numbers before. So, again, just thank you everybody's, for everybody's support and just excitement and coming out. And I know I was talking to Mark and Mark on, Mark Squared on Friday, uh, just some ideas that we have of really getting council, um, out in the community and present in the public, um, and really doing that together this year with some great ideas as a council, but also within our wards. Um, so thank you again for everybody's support, and it was a really fun night, so thank you for making it a success.
Yeah, I'm going last, but I'll echo everyone's comments about Friday night, it was a great event. Thank you so much for including us, and I think that the more that we can be out in the community and be visible and engaging, the better. Um, I've also gotten some questions about Christmas lights still being up. Um, is that, I don't know, I don't think I've seen them, but people have asked me about them, so I'm curious if that's.
That was, would you rather we fill potholes or take down Christmas lights? Because it's the same team.
What was the choice again?
Potholes or Christmas lights, because it's the same team doing both.
I love the lights.
I do a lot better than the.
I was.
I'm not asking about the lights.
Let them know.
I didn't know there are still lights up.
That Megan and I made the request to keep them up, um, through February. Well, the candy canes could have came down, I think that was an oversight, but we did request the lights to stay up, um, because it's so dark at night, and so when we have our sippin' shops.
Oh.
And it also just kind of creates a vibe of, like, our downtown people love the lights. Um, and then when the Chiefs went on to the Super Bowl, the lights are red and white. So we were like, okay, let's keep those up, but they should be coming down soon.
Or you could just get green ones, it's fine, St. Patrick's Day is coming.
I would love to see on the record lights up all year in our downtown.
That's a good idea.
Anything else, Ms. Long?
No, nothing else.
Okay, with that, you saw my report that was attached, uh, all the different things I've been going to and been involved in, but I do have a few additional things I was going to add. I won't go into much of the chamber, uh, banquet, it was, it was wonderful. I did have somebody ask me the, uh, next morning, they wanted to get a pizza and they couldn't find a place to park, and they were wondering what was going on at the cha, at the fuel house, so. But it was a great showing by, by council and staff, and I think, would you say nineteen people, was it, from, from the city, I think, or?
I think it was twenty-three or twenty-four.
We end up that many.
Total, yeah, with plus ones.
Yeah. Um, if, if you have not had a chance to come in through the community center, I would recommend you do that and check out not only the new windows, but that whole new front doors and windows that are there. It has made a difference night and day, I mean, the place just looks so much different. So if you haven't had a chance, I would find a opportunity to walk through those doors one day this coming week and just take it all in, it really improved the appearance of that place. Um, I do get to have a little bit of fun once in a while, so Thursday evening, I did get invited to be a judge at the D R E P T O Staff Chili Cook-Off. And so, I, I, I served our community well by making sure I spilled, at the very first booth spilled some down my shirt. Fortunately, it was a dark shirt, and it was, uh, not the white chili, thank God. But I enjoyed it and got to meet a few people there, so it was a fun event to, uh, to be able to participate in. Um, there was one other thing I wanted to talk about, and I wish the police chief was still here. Couple of weeks ago, up on my Facebook feed, social media, popped up of, from a neighboring, you know, a little bit south in the metro area, a, another police agency who had worked with our police agency to put a little bit of a fun little video together. And, um, and so I, I kind of watched it a little bit, they showed a little bit of it there. And this was on, and I saw it on my feed because they had, um, had tagged Bonner Springs Police Department in it. And I read the comments on there, and I was just really disturbed at the negative, snarky comments that I read. And a few days later, I saw the same feed, with the same exact video, now with a little bit more full length on it, in it, posted on our website, and the difference in the comments, um, was just completely different. Um, it was how much they loved the police department, how much they respected the police department. They thought the video was great, and it really spoke to me a testimony to the, uh, our police department and the police chief and the, and the staff in their efforts, uh, to be a part and integrate themselves and be a part of this community, not just police the community, but be an actual integral, integral part of the community. And so I want to make sure I, I, um, I want to make sure that the chief knows that I appreciate that and the staff knows that I appreciate, uh, their efforts in that regard, so, thank you very much. And with that, um, is there anything else, any questions, comments? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adjourn from Ms. Gurley and a second by Ms. Blanks. Uh, I'll just do a quick voice vote, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? With that, we're adjourned.